A 7pm, so we're going to follow the need to order and stay. Starting conditions. I have a decision to be required. The United States of America, in the U.S. Republic, for which it stands, our nation, this law, the majority justice of Chicago. There, we can, on the agenda, or the vote to execute the deed, the acceptance of conservation land at D home.
So, um, for the, for this is, um, thing that the council's been working on for a number of years, this is open space that is associated with residential development, lots of building, parkways, the and there is a six acre parcel that is going to the uptown and what is now before the board, and this has been prepared by town council, is the quick plan to deed to be signed by the Florida Selectment Conservation Commission has already signed it so that we can file the deed and basically accept this open space parcel. So unfortunately, we not currently propose vote for the board to consider file. It's all for one, I guess, to move that vote to execute deed for the acceptance of conservation land at D home.
Okay, motion to that effect? Yes, I make a motion that the board accepts. So that's a key deed for the acceptance of conservation land at D top.
Second motion.
Hi, hi, unanimous vote.
So then the only thing that will be also required is for one member to go before Denise Smith, our town clerk, to have their signature notarized. So if someone wants to volunteer to do that tomorrow or the next day, the other two, if they've signed the last sheet here, and have that last person after their signature and or eyes, then hand things off to town council so that they can arrange for it.
Like, are you watching it?
No, like, yeah, it would be easier.
I would, could do it on my paper. Is that good? So our future. Next thing the agenda is to vote to execute the
So, um, before you, you have a track change version. The board agrees with Cina's and voted to execute. Town of Blackstone, while initially giving that the form was good, they made what really are some minor comments, you'll see those track changes. They're primarily on page two and three. I wanted to bring it back before the board showed the changes that they had requested so that you could vote to reconsider and approve the contract. I would recommend that it be conditional so that board house staff can review, board house chair can make sure that there's no issues that the task force for executing that. And the major change really has to do with the invoice, but because it's four hours a week, that's what this works out to be, so that basically four hours a week that the nurse is supposed to be spending for Blackstone, they basically identified what that works out to on monthly basis, then. I had to dine in here and verify that the number and work.
So we can make a motion based on the change before we hold.
Correct, yep. So I I make a motion that we the execution of the intermunicipal agreement with Republican Health Nurse Service between the towns of Blackstone and Upton contingent on the board to talk through.
I second, all those in favor, by a unanimous vote. The vote through the activity equipment applications, please stand. It's only just here.
Yes, I was just looking to see if it was on and see anyone. So, um, we have a town policy on, um, that donations first needs to be accepted by for slot to make donations. Now, uh, with, uh, some of these are really minor amounts and some towns would actually have, like, if it's above $500 for a donation, that's when more slot they get involved for donations below that part. You don't have that language, so really any donation that counts should be accepted by a fourth slot. That means in one of those chairs, reading my group this one. More simple, minor donations, and that would just be by a vote of course. That's just background, we can change, but here, there existing policies, please, we just need to vote to accept them. As donations that help.
We got a motion to accept that donation? I'll make a motion to accept the donation for kids at play as of March 21st. Friday, July 21st, spring 2020.
Second motion.
All those in favor, by a unanimous vote. Okay, sound, we have, that's for the board.
Okay, so, um, this is going to be rather short, and with a summary for the board via email later on during the meeting since I wasn't here last week. I did want to at least let the board know that some concerns seniors had asked for meeting with me, and that was earlier today down at Nell House. I may have left the meeting pretty positive. While there are challenges, I think the challenges, you know, because that's maybe in fact probably the town had conversations, and they revolved around transportation, medical appointments, outings. It's that, that when they were in Nell House, you didn't have a third destination, be the community center that you need to arrange transportation. And with currently, we're understaffed and drivers, um, area. We're going to have to work to maybe try to prioritize certain things and maybe come back to the boards with, pay some ideas on how we can transform this into a meeting president. An example, someone asks, okay, great, we got this conversation, what now? One of the things I'd love to propose that we do is we hold a public forum and have it facilitated by the Florida Selectment, right? The, you know, and have it as open communication so we can hear more from the community. I had people saying, why don't we rent a car for two months as a trial to do medical so why don't we just buy a, buy a car so that we don't have to use the bus? Yeah, there's definitely people who are trying to identify ways that people can improve the situation, but there's also some, some sort of metric gathering we need to identify as well. Right now, there's essentially this set schedule that you need Nell House to train your community center. I've asked the department staff to track usage, how many people are picking up? Is it something that having a set schedule works or should it be somewhat generic? On the says more on demand and just try to come up with some ideas. And I think we're at the point, we've been at the community center for three months, people have started to get used to building and, and sort of engaging on some of these larger topic areas. Because some of the seniors felt that they didn't have the access to use the car. So, uh, it was a good meeting, we spent them for about an hour and a half, there was excluding San Diego, it was 19 people there. You know, even had a member of the financing committee, so it was good to sort of hear some of these things, maybe revisiting our budget figures, re-elevating resources. You may not have stated, or at least for a question before, we did not, we need to maybe try to get it where we planned exactly, that's what you thought. Combination of a whole bunch, so that was one of the main highlights, I at least wanted to let the board know. My descent, there's a lot of other things going on, we'll follow up with separate email. I've identified those, providing those updates that can also put it on.
Thank you. Uh, we had, it's the public input. Anyone? Forward any comments?
So there, here's one, I wonder if the board has had a chance to review my request to serve the town of Columbus for Heritage Day. I put in a request for the.
Yeah, thank you. That's, that's, um, the initiative to review, that's my need, so. Okay. We have some appointments. First appointments are for the old housing trust. What I Brian Gallagher. Jim. Jim.
People bring this.
Do you have a question? Do you have a question? Maybe we can have some questions to the two applicants, so they, um, give us kind of an overview. Behind the hammer, hey, yeah?
Yeah.
You want to go first?
Sure. So I'm applying for the, uh, person across his contact, like, Kathy Robinson, two weeks ago, so. And she had heard that, convinced me that she should convince that committee, uh, that was probably a year ago. And it's good, there's other people that also were interested in that, so it's not so much of a that they've done a good job. So I still have that interest and at that time was, well, actually, since college, I've always been interested in urban planning. I look my background, uh, in college economics, this urban planning is interested, unfortunately, oh, maybe fortunately. I chose not to prepare that, that was more, probably more of a look, that it started out. Now I am retired and still have that interest in becoming, going to involve with the town and also exploring that interest in the person. And also. In the past, some of the things that I've done for the volunteer work, I was on the Northern School Building Committee. So that for like five years, seven, of that primary percent. That was a great experience and I think I delivered a good product that started out well. Uh, so that was probably since the time was, maybe fifteen years, but I think it's completed. And also I just retired fifteen months ago, so I do have the time and I do want to make sure to keep my brain active. And some of the things that, I am happily retired, but there are so many that you miss. Problem solving, team environment, was one of the things I really liked. I had the great opportunity to be able to serve in different roles. It was a council, I mean, it was actually more. But that, um, a lot of it was called sales and operation plan, which requires you to work with multi-functioning across the organization, make sure that everyone is tied in, making sure that whatever is being promoted, that everyone can find out, we should production, don't create any sort of place, our markets are in place, and it's a wise decision. I did that one way, last twenty years or so, and some of those products that we had to get ball opposed to keep our margins high, was doing the product down to Costa Rica, Mexico first, and then Costa Rica. So that was being in the medical device industry, it's regulated industry, so very involved process to be sure that you did it, the ball, you require regulatory approvals in place, and that basically a country in the world has an regulatory process. So this, that was a lot of fun, that was just an example. And so I, do you miss that, working with many people, cross functions, cross interests, cross it's connecting pillars, and so I do want to give back to all of the product, I think that this would be a with the past background and the interest that I have, looking forward to certainly serving on this.
Gina Serrachi.
Yeah, hi there. Hi. Hi, Brian, my neighbor, so we have Glenn App representing tonight. Um, so what do I, I unfortunately can't hear very well on my computer, I should have come, I didn't know if I should come or just go online, but I'm interested in joining this committee, and it was my, my interests were first peaked during the whole Mechanics Street 401B situation that we all and, um, I got to know Kathy and I started learning a little bit more about it, and I understand that affordable housing, you know, umbrellas, the, the shape and direction that our town can go in. Admittedly, I don't have a lot of experience with housing, but I do have, you know, experienced, experienced chairing committees, like I'm the chair of Amendment Upton Education Foundation, I'm the webmaster for the Misco PTO, and I manage some Facebook groups, and then at work, I also chair some working groups. So I, you know, I know how to manage projects, I know how to research, I'm a research scientist, so I can learn relatively quickly. I feel like I could come up to speed to learn more about affordable housing and, you know, and I think that residents should have a seat at this table to help mitigate risk that could potentially come from, you know, corporate for profiteers in our town, you know, like non-residents who want to come, and I would like to, uh, you know, help the town probe what we need, how we can provide equity, um, you know, what our resources are, you know, what, where we can go. And I think I could be an asset in that way, as far as my own project management and my investment in this town, I have young children in the district, I plan on staying for the duration, and I'd like to see us grow in a healthy and productive way and for our future. Should I share more, or is that okay?
That's fine, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions from the board members? Thank you both.
Yeah, I, totally, I just would second to thank you for being willing to take the time. The Affordable Housing Trust, I think, has, you know, and underutilized over the past several years for various reasons, no fault of, you know, we, we sometimes struggle to get people involved, people with passion and interest and capacity and focus and drive, so this is, this is wonderful, I'm very confident and happy about the, the new configuration of the board and to welcome, it's great.
I also would like to thank you both for coming forward, and I would intake a motion to appoint Brian Gallagher and Gina Serrachi.
I make a motion to appoint Brian Gallagher and Gina Drachi to the Affordable Housing Trust for two, two-year terms, each individually for a two-year term.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
I.
A unanimous vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you both.
Thank you, Gina.
Thank you very much, alright, okay.
So, we have some appointments for the zoning board.
So as the board, um, discussed two meetings ago, um, we had at annual town meeting, voted to increase the membership from three members and two associates, five numbers to associates, so, or you are, uh, the applications for, uh, three members for the new positions, I believe one of them indicated that, um, they, of those three applications the board has, that one was interested in associate. We also have Ted Stedman, his term is up for reappointment, and in your pack is also an email that Sandy had received that one of the associate members, current associate members would be interested in full membership, so. Lots of interest in participating, which it's great to see, especially with the importance that the ZBA plays within town.
Who is the member that to be a associate? Yeah, wants to go from an associate to a full board member.
Robert Humes.
Yes.
That's the one?
I know we have some people here, um, I know Don from the building committee, but I don't, not familiar with.
Don?
Yes. Thank you. So, um, I was on the store commission, but was almost six years the chair there. I've been on the community center, um, building committee, and that's going to be ending up pretty soon. So, um, I really want to bridge the gap between the store commission and the zoning board. There's things that happen around here, I'm going to work with that, and on the houses down here, where, you know, people want to make changes, and it's historical, whether they can make changes or not, people don't generally know that. And yeah, I'm just passionate about preserving Upton, character of Upton, but also being reasonable about, you know, updates that need to be made.
Yeah. Robert Butler?
Yes.
If you give us a little, little
Well, in a little way, currently been resident of the town before years in October. Prior to that, I served in the CBA, it was the town of Fulton, uh, nine years. So I'm quite familiar with zoning boards and zoning regulations as, as they need to be. Of course, every town's a little bit different. I wanted to get involved in Upton to help with the books and shaping of town, all that's always come in and should have done correctly. And as Tom was saying, we still have to preserve, still perspective, we have the same challenge as all of them do. So that was fine, I. We just wanted to get back.
Michael Gelb?
Yep, I'm Michael Gelb, I live right down the street at number forty-three, and I've been there for forty years. I don't have much experience working with community boards of any sort, I do have a lot of experience with zoning, I've heard that zoning was all over the Eastern Mass, uh, for years that I've been in business, I had my construction companies, so I built companies. We've been phasing out, I'm just doing architecture and design. So I've lived here for forty years, but I've never participated in the community field, I feel this is time to give back. You have the knowledge of this position. So, um, it's arbitrary, fine.
That's good, thank you. And Robert Humes. He just made a request to go to a full membership.
Correct.
Okay. And then we have Stedman Briggs, who's a member looking to be reappointed.
Right.
So that gives us four positions, four?
Five.
Five, two on the appointments, and Robert Hume, yes, five.
Yeah, well, I think with Rob, right, assuming Robert Humes is going to be one of them, right? So he either stays as an associate member or he changes to a full member, but then in addition to him, there would be four, I guess, is.
In addition to him.
In addition to him, assuming that be right.
I'm confused, so, um, Don Spargo, I believe, wants to be an associate. No, you want to be a full?
Yeah.
This is your application said.
Yeah, that was the one.
Okay. And Robert Butler would be four. Everyone wants four.
Yes. So I don't know, do you want to do, want to, so I guess maybe one way to do it is, you know, I would be inclined to let Robert become a full member, just because he's currently a member, so he's been sort of doing that, I kind of think of that as a like a normal progression, like you, right, you paid your dues being an associate member, so
Right.
So at least grant that. So I would, uh, make a motion to point Robert Humes as a full member of the zoning board of appeals with the term expiring in 2026.
I second that. All those in favor?
I.
Okay.
We have two associate members appointment, right?
Yeah. And then we still have two additional two additional full members, right?
Right.
Reappointment and vacant.
So we have four more appointments to make. I think I definitely would support Don as a full member, partly just because of all of his experience and all of the other boards and committees. I love the idea of bringing some new but experienced perspective as a full member with Mr. Butler. Again, I'm just sharing my perspective, we can each do that. I think Mr. Gelb could be an associate member. Oh, Ted's on. Yeah, so I'd be fine with. It'll be easier if we go sort of one at a time, because I, I definitely support Don, so that maybe I just do that one.
Okay.
Sort of check it off and make our lives simpler and simpler, because we don't work for not, I don't know.
On Don, I know he's got a lot of committee experience, but I think Robert Butler and Michael Gelb have more zoning, specific zoning experience in two very different ways, one sat on a zoning board, one has appeared multiple times before zoning boards. I'd like to see Don as an associate so he can learn more about specifics of zoning boards, I mean, there's a lot of prep that goes in before, when you appear before a zoning board, you need to know the rules, regulations, and everything else, it is very technical. That's my thought.
I would have to agree with Don Spargo as an associate. And yes, with Robert Butler and Michael Gelb, because they've been involved in the zoning.
Yeah.
So that leaves.
So those would be the, that means we've So those would be the, that means we've all the two would be full, yeah.
And the other two would be associate members?
Yeah.
Associate.
Two associate.
Yes.
Yes.
We, we've increased the whole size of the board.
Got it.
I'd really love to be a former. Are you excited?
Been on the side, thank you. Um.
So then that would leave Ted being the second associate?
Yes.
Yes.
Which I'm okay with.
I'm fine.
Yes, me too. You have some, any other discussion?
Um. I mean, yeah, I mean, I would support Don and Rob. So I think the only sort of variation is. Michael, I think, you know, my, I tend to be more. I, I think my, my only fear with having a builder on the zoning board, it tends to be more biased towards builders as opposed to the best interest of the town and. So that's, but that's my own, that's my own personal bias. So that's, that's my hesitance is coming in as a builder onto a zoning board and influences in a zoning board to be, you know, more, more pro developer is less ideal to me than pro community. Not that you can be both. I'm not prejudging anybody's opinions here. I'm just telling you my opinions.
Hold, I would have, hold the diametric opposite on that. A lot of times people are in, who are in the industry are much harder on those in the industry, hold them to a higher standard and we, you know, Michael's been in town for forty years. That's my own opinion. That's been my experience when I've sat on boards, you know, but.
I totally understand.
We can agree to disagree.
Well, I would. Michael Gallagher, who is a full member.
Yeah, great. That's why there's three of us and not four of us.
Yeah.
Are we ready?
I think so.
Okay, entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we appoint Rob Butler and Michael Gelb as full members, full voting members of the zoning board of appeals with terms ending in twenty twenty-six is one and in twenty twenty-five? I can't.
Yes. Okay. Yes.
Okay. So do we have a preference for which one is twenty twenty-five and which one is twenty twenty-six? We just have to indicate that.
Right.
Right, so the two full remaining positions, one is a term ending in twenty-five, one is a term ending in twenty-six. I, I.
Right, so that's okay.
I don't think that matters too much. Do you guys care?
No.
That's what we're deciding right now. Finish the motion. Okay, so why don't we do, since we were split on Rob, we'll put him on or Michael will put him on until twenty twenty-five, Rob Butler to twenty twenty-six. So I make a motion that we appoint Rob Butler and Michael Gelb as full members of the board of appeals with Robert Butler sitting the seat, the term that expires in twenty twenty-six and Michael Gelb in the seat that expires in twenty twenty-five.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action. I make a motion for associate members.
And we're going to have the same issue here. One is in twenty-four, one's ends in twenty-six. How do we want to handle that?
I think it's, I mean, I would. I, I mean, it's fine either way. I think it's. We don't know what's going to happen between now and then. I think putting Ted on until twenty-four is fine and Don on until twenty-six and that, you know, we need to move people around or can push people into the next available slot for a full member, then we've got that flexibility.
Okay. I make a motion, we appoint Stedman Briggs as an associate member until twenty twenty-four and Don Spargo as an associate member until twenty twenty-six.
I second that motion.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye, unanimous action. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Come on, tear him.
Great.
We have a vote to open the special town meeting warrant on Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three.
For the board is a summary of the calendar and a motion for the board's consideration opening the warrant, setting a.
Good to me.
It's good.
I move that the board of selectmen vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten and Town Code, Chapter one hundred, to open the warrant for the Tuesday, November seventh, twenty twenty-three special town meeting on Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three and to close said warrants on Friday, September eighth, twenty twenty-three at noon. Said special town meeting to be held at Nittmuck Regional High School, ninety Pleasant Street, Upton.
I second the motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous action. You don't have any minutes, right? I'm sorry. Pass over the minutes then. Yep. At this time, we would like to adjourn the meeting to our workshop to discuss holy angels and pristine building.